We're gonna go ahead and get started. Yes, don't worry. That's, yeah.
Cool.
All right, with that, I'm calling the September twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Iowa City Public Hall. Iowa City Public Library Board of Trustees. It's public order, so the first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna check out the agenda and see if we can get that approved before we get started.
I love the preview agenda.
Second?
All right, moved in second, all those in favor?
All those in favor?
All those opposed? All right. Then we'll open it up for public discussion, any members of the public. Double checking. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our agenda and our items to be discussed. First, I want to talk about our budget. So let's get started there. Alzwerth is including a ton of information with regards to our buildings and things of that nature.
Yeah, so the Friends Foundation documents in here, which we can either look at it now or with the public report. And then there's the twenty-four received notes by the town board. There's questions as we go. This, the expenditure of the two-five funds. All of this is information that you have had in front of you, but this is a different sort of format for it. So if it at first looks a little bit different, that's because of this, but I'm happy to answer any questions that people have about it. If it helps in the way to think about it, everything with that sort of more green than blue heading is what we would generally consider more control or moving.
Year over year, the Friends Foundation is huge. We're really grateful for all this support it's been using. Was there, were there big grants that came in, or was it just overall?
There were a number of large groups from decedents, people who had made transfers to the foundation. And I think if we could look at some of the projections and the age of some of our donors, everything they expect. They got a lot of folks to be making mistakes in that even coming years.
I don't think we've made this public before. What was the change of focus with the foundation to do that?
With what?
Their financial statements.
Oh, um, we, we have in the past published kind of the, the statement of financial position.
I don't know if we've ever put on a minute tomorrow for the city of this kind of public format. And I was just surprised. I mean, it's a nice first transparency, but I just wondered.
Oh, we did last year.
Two weeks, okay. So it's my M N E shot then.
Oh, I didn't remember either. So Jen, Jen, let me know that we need to prepare that. I did provide a little bit more context this year in terms of like the investment portfolio. There's not great detail on the investment portfolio, but I thought it just might be interesting to follow.
Using QuickBooks now?
The organization has been using QuickBooks for a number of years. We are in the process of transitioning to QuickBooks Online, which is really exciting, which will allow us some, I think, some agility with the new accountant that we're bringing on right now.
So with the general budget, the library's budget, so are there things that were on liars that we should think?
No, no, I would say no, no significant changes since the last time we looked at. At the, we're, year is wrapping up.
Yep.
As we look at the upcoming year, so we're, we're starting that budget process for twenty-six. We just had budget kickoff rules this week. They were mostly focused on entry details, which is, is great, but that would give us a lot of, you know, new information. So Jen and I are, are felt and ready to do the new list entry. Departments are working on their individual budget requests. I think we'll have to have some longer form conversations of the leadership team thinking about one of the priorities when asking for more than what we've had in the past for certain lines. At this point, I think that we will amplify the need of increasing the collections budget. There has not been an increase in the collection budget in a long four years. And we're using more from Nobu, which is okay as a short-term solution, but won't take the place of growing that budget line with inflation and other constitutions. So that will be, I think, a main talking point in our budget meeting. If we take that forward, we will do our very best to illustrate how decreased or stagnant buying power increases holds and other issues that library patrons have. So it'll be a complex ask, but we will, we'll get the data out as best we can. I included the C I P worksheet that we have for our big project. The city is using new software for the C I P program. The user experience so far have been significantly better than the old ones, so that's a real positive. Especially if the problem doesn't do a lot of C I Ps, it's, it's, it was a, it was a much better approach. But if you took a look at that, you'll notice I expanded the justification to include a little bit more project history. This is the project that Susan, the previous library director, had submitted in September year twenty-seventeen. It started as a multi-year project, it was sort of growing, and grown. I updated, updated the numbers at least twice since I've been here in that C I P request. And this year, I reached out to some of the vendors and, and did new math, looking at the things that need to be replaced. They had a pretty significant budget jump from seven hundred and seventy-five thousand to nine hundred and forty thousand. Every year, there's, it is. The C I P budget never had enough resources in it to cover all the closed projects. This project is coded at number two out of five, as far as how critical it is, number one is the most critical. So, so it is at the higher end of the spectrum. We won't know for a little while yet whether this is, is included in the first pass of the C I P review or not, but I'll keep the board up to date on that. It always feels like a building that's about twenty years into its life, that you're in a hard spot because you're still the new building in the community of Ives. But many of your fixtures are starting to reach into life. And I shared at the first C I P review meeting that our maintenance and facilities teams have extended useful life of many of our items through proactive maintenance and repair and careful stewardship. And I'm really proud of that. But the options for that are over for some of these things. Our study carols are sort of refinished down to the core, and there are other things that, that we're, we're right on the cusp of, I would say, sort of safety issues. So I'm optimistic that it'll get passed through the budget, and again, I'll keep the board up to date of how that looks.
It's too high than where we've been in previous years?
We were at two last year, but it was scheduled for implementation in fiscal year twenty-six, technically scheduled. So if that, if that holds, it will be funded for twenty-six. If, if the city reprioritizes the projects, it may get moved or changed.
That's where that context of increasing costs and length of the ask, right?
We gotta get it done because it's pushing a million dollars.
Right.
You know, like, how many, how much over a million dollars do they want to put on it?
And that's still more than a year out.
Yeah. I mean, it wasn't a million dollar project, and now it is.
So if this is funded by government bond, general purpose government bond, does that go through the voters or no?
No, it would be, it would be funded by already allocated.
Maybe extra hurdle like that, right? Any other concerns or questions?
I mean, it is, this building does still feel like the new library.
It's still the new library, right? With that, I think it'd be okay for us to move on to our policy review of eight oh nine library use.
Apologies for not including the memo in the packet, but we've got a hard copy here. So we've just had this policy in front of you, and we plan to bring it back farther into the winter. But Angie and I have been working with legal to look at ways to add a restriction on signs on sticks, which have been disrupted in a few programs in the past. So we had a really robust conversation with Woods Craig, this is what we're having, talking about different ways to fit that in. And as you'll see, I'm proposing of adding an additional point to the policy, specifically talking about protest signs lying beneath that eleven or on sticks and disallowing those in the library unless they're associated with the group that's, that's using them.
I was actually, my perspective discussion, I was actually, I like this because you may recall, I don't know what it was, I don't know how long I've been on the library anymore. But back in the day, I, I had, I had mentioned this as a, it wasn't in relation to this policy, but I think it was in relation to an event that I was concerned about with children, where we had some people in there, in the library that had signs on sticks, protest signs. And at the time, I said, well, you know, you could get a bunch of people who are opposing, opposing each other, right? And then someone has one of these signs that could potentially whop someone, right? And so that was my concern, and I remember at the time, though, the discussion was, I can't recall who brought it up, but it was the legality, can we, this is a public space, can we legally restrict those types of signs or any types of signs? So I take the city attorney's comfortable with this now.
Yes, and it's, as you're, as you're alluding to, it's not the content of a sign that we're opposed to, it's the disruptive nature and potential safety issues related to both the stick itself and then having a less, a harder to control sign or poster.
Yeah, that seems to walk the line between safety and freedom of speech. And I think that it's appropriate as this is a polling place and a community space at the same time. So I believe one of those was politic, was it politically motivated? Maybe I'm wrong, maybe that was unrelated, and it just kind of happened in the same month. We had political agenda happening kind of at the same time there were children's programs happening. I don't remember if they were the same event or if it was just really close together in time, yeah.
And we've had disruptive issues not at programs as well, just with items that people bring into the space. So this would feel like it'll, it'll create that guideline that wants to enforce it.
This is just a very minor wording suggestion, just to keep eight oh nine, three oh seven consistent with the other stems. We might want to verb before flyers, something like displaying or distributing flyer signs for posters.
Catch. I'm comfortable with that. I have an inexperienced question to ask, and it's eight oh three, eight oh nine, three oh eight, accept at events. That's my question exactly.
Does that do programs count as events?
Yeah, what is our qualified for an event and why would we make that qualification? That's the ignorant part I'm asking.
So it's related to the same reason that our meeting is open in the public, because in a public event, libraries are public parks and here is not a protected.
There's no expectation of privacy.
There's no protection of privacy. And that is a point that we anticipate taking kind of a deeper dive in at insurance day and with the legal team. That has, that is a, I mean, part of the policy that's been talked about sort of at some point in multiple places over the past year or so. And we did have someone from the legal team come into an all staff meeting about it. So I anticipated that one coming back with more explanation at the next round. But the exclusive mention of events becomes their, their public, not their public facility.
I think historically, we also, we have media up in common, we picture the events, or take pictures, or video of it. And then we ourselves can film events.
Anyway, make room for that as well.
So that was a part of the privacy policy team that you and Ben and you know, like, block information. Just to kind of cover our ability to do that without having that permission from society.
The self censoring.
And also from private groups that can use their, I mean, private groups who use the rooms so they can take pictures at their events that they are hosting and then use those photos for their own work.
Do we need to consider taking photos that are disruptive to events because we've had that situation occur? Using photos as an intimidation factor?
It can be slippery.
However, they're disruptive to our mission. I mean, it's aggression when it's down, when someone stands in front of you and says, I'm gonna identify you. Which we have had happen.
And it seems like that could be tied into the point three oh seven.
It's like, right, it's not a sign, but something in the long run for consideration.
I think that's a great.
And the intention is to disrupt.
Yeah, I think we could work with legal to try to figure out if there's an appropriate framework to put around that.
And because that also stirs up the other person with camera, and you start having the one-on-one thing in the middle of the room.
Right, yeah.
Yes, it's unnecessary.
In personal space, right?
I would make another that so we can, we can talk with legal about connecting that to the harassment and disruption.
Or access phone, right, but it's, it falls right into that photo work. I remember people saying, I have a right to take a photo in this meeting.
Would it work to say unless authorized by? I don't know, unless authorized by the event, I don't know how to phrase that right, but if you could move that, except at events and tell to say something like unless authorized by the event. I don't know. Hosts? Or somebody has probably better phrasing than me on that, but unless authorized by event hosts, the director or designee, and just skip that except at events. So taking pictures or videoing, taping people unless authorized by event hosts, the director, designee.
I think we'll get challenged.
I don't know, do you, is that, is that not right?
Public space.
It's something, you know, I thought of this when the Yamas were here, and I was taking pictures of my kids, and you know, there's other, obviously I didn't post any pictures, but add other people's kids, but it didn't, right? Like, ask those kids that are there, you know what I mean?
Okay, okay.
Or the other kids.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
But I think that most of us, pictures are okay, it's just one if they're not.
Well, that's great feedback. We will, we'll take those moves the next, next round of it. So for now, pending further discussion, I've entertained a motion to approve. And we're, I'll move.
I have one more.
Go ahead.
A little tiny wording thing, four oh two, eight oh nine, four oh two. Again, keeping things parallel. We might want a verb at the beginning of that, so I don't know what the verb would be about personal hygiene and odor and scent, but using or wearing or, I'm not sure what they.
Yeah, that one's gonna be a little harder.
All the others start with a verb and things that fit under that stem, except this one, so.
Could we add that to the workshop list and provisionally approve? What do you think?
I like that.
Okay. Let's do that.
So we had a motion, right?
Yes, I'm gonna have a, yeah, moved here.
We got a second? Okay, then all those in favor of updating that library use policy as proposed?
Aye.
All those opposed? Now, we can head on and start talking about the policy about policies, the policy on policy.
Be a riveting one, as in of the committee, committees, right?
Right. But any comments here, I think this is mostly just making sure that it's hiding.
And no substitute change due to the, the number one.
This policy doesn't follow the policy in three years.
Remember that one's, yeah, good catch.
I'm gonna check that because that would be, I think we may.
We pride ourselves on it.
I wonder if we replaced the previous.
That could be.
Date, I will definitely check that. It should be an ironic one.
But it wouldn't be the first, because there's a, a five, or, let's see, twelve years at the start, eighty-five to ninety-seven, and then five years from two thousand to two thousand and five.
They could have changed the date, the years at some point in there though.
Interesting. We're on top of things more now than we ever have been.
In the last forty years.
I move to approve the policy.
Been moved.
On seconds.
All right. All those in favor? And all those opposed? Are we done? Passes. Moving on from that, I'd like to get into Alzwerth's director's report. Hope y'all have a chance to read it through, but we can take a little minute if we'd like.
And no new, no, no, really new information, I talked a little about C I P already. To share the date for the legislature reception, for anybody new on the board, that's an annual, the, the travels between libraries and government economy. It's an opportunity to connect with local legislators and talk about issues. This one will be at Quinlan on December second, I guess that will need to come. The repair of the polling fixture went really well, like, they were doing a great job managing that. It was, it was not quite an emergency, but it was urgent, it was discovered. So it's nice to have that, gotten, gotten significant interest in the Quinlan libraries, their learning opportunity, which is positive. Right now, it's not looking like we will need to request drastic changes to operational hours. We'll talk next week at leadership team meeting about what we need to adjust after hours at all. But I'm pleased with the amount of interest that's been shown, I think that could be a good opportunity to start. Happy to answer any questions.
And one that, just noted that the drag story time was moved from the Stanley Museum to here, is there, was there an issue of them hosting it? What was the, yeah, story there?
Yeah, we ran into some logistical issues around where the book hold bill could be and different elements of the program. And it felt like it was going to be very complex to maintain the event the way we were imagining it there. So we, we decided we're easiest to make this year and continue with it planned. That was the story time that the Stanley League folks had sort of pitched an idea to be part of both the Heron exhibit and tied into the Electoral Freedom Festival. But I think there was disappointment on both sides, so it couldn't go as planned, but we were able to make it work here.
Story time does still happen.
And I think it'll, it'll be, it'll be fine, we've done it before and we're working on it.
I want to find those sticks. And I want to move on to departmental, to departmental reports, Children's Services.
Important, I wrote. We're in, it's the Virtual Freedom Fest and Book Week this week. The program every day is, we, Child Services and Children's Services, of course, not with, a day. So I've had already a lot of programming, and the festival this year will extend because we're able to work with the book festival to collaborate on a couple of authors that are coming, that the topics are fit very well with the free festival mission. So the final day of the festival will be that Saturday, the book festival, for what, programming your whole day. The morning will feature two events that highlight the virtual freedom of libraries and public schools and school doctors.
Are we gonna get new interns?
Oh my gosh. Same day now, we're reopening the, the teen services in transition. We have one brace, or braces gone, Katie's still here. So Victoria and Katie are doing the best they can to keep it afloat. And we are going to reopen the teen in transition. So if you know good folks that follow these teams for that, we did hire four chartered divisions. Victor has started this week and is very excited about getting started. He's in the SLS program at the university with their library. Military background and also technology, just feels like a military. He's really excited about it.
People like those ordering. I was gonna say, it's interesting they brought in the military background first.
Yeah, I think there's something about that, well, the selflessness of being in the military is part of that, of people, but also
Since you mentioned SLS, did you reach out to like Jackie Bajer at SLS too, about the other teen intern? Seems like she has great connections.
When we repost, yeah, we're gonna try to target some folks. Couple of really nice
College of Ed.
At college creative writing actually picked it up this time, and so we were getting that response. You always have the question of where did you get the job? A lot of the interns were from one professor in creative writing, which was great, but then being like, we need to find a different professor, like a different subject. Part of it has been great, but then you get somebody who has to leave for student teaching.
Yep.
Social work is a big, or just finding somebody that's supposed to be, or anyone really that has a passion for is what we're looking for.
Right.
These people are hard to find. Teams get forgotten a lot, and they're also of an age that would just pass being a teen, so that's always a, a thing. Like, I remember high school, and I, five, I'm like, isn't that yet? We also modified that position a while ago, so in order to try to reach people that are maybe not at the school, at the university, people that have an associate degree and are out in the world, and it's clearly an internship of learning, learning about what a library and job. Actually, on students as well.
Any other questions? Otherwise, we can move on to the senior access services. I know Sam's not here right now, but hope you took the time to read through this, I thought it was really pretty interesting what, what Sam was able to dig up here with regards to our social media imprint and all of that. Always good to see the book bike out, making the rounds. Especially appreciated seeing some quantities around just how many times it went out, how many books were donated and things like that, so that's much appreciated.
You should have brought it up at the fall window. They're out on the desk. That here's, probably, there's more downstairs, you know.
That's moving, waiting in development.
Can you decide, I bought an ice cream bag, we have a fundraiser in Tokyo this night, so you've probably all.
It's on the calendar, right?
Yes, you probably will need to go get some, some wonderful frozen yogurt after this event, and if I was able to.
Up till eleven.
Open till eleven, you can go twice if you now.
And now, when you came to the library, Katie, one of your goals was to increase the monthly donations, is that?
And now, when you came to the library, Katie, one of your goals was to increase the monthly donations, is that happening?
Yeah, it's been, um, it's been a bit slower than I'd like, but I think part of it is that it's in tandem with, um, improving our communications. Making sure, as we now have a, um, a bi-monthly, um, or six times a year, um, mailing list that, um, that about thirteen hundred people signed up for. So that's a way to, you know, increase communications, and then we, of course, have social media and, um, and we're just kind of staying on message with folks about being able to increase their, uh, their gifts by giving monthly, so. Um, you know, I, I saw this in my last position, it did take some time to, to build that giving, but, um. Once you have folks that are used to giving on a monthly basis, they generally stick around and they wanna keep that sustaining su- support, so.
Questions, concerns? All right, we'll keep it rolling. Uh, President Proten's report, I don't have anything. From there, we can just move on to new announcements from members, if there are any. What about committees? Anything from that you could see?
We haven't that lately.
Okay. What about finances? Yada, all right. The icing. Uh, anything from the foundation, sorry? From the foundation members?
Committee, committee.
Oh, committee.
I don't think anything more than what probably has been covered by, um, Alsworth and Katie on that. We've had some, unfortunately, I'm in harvesting season, so I was not able to attend, um. The, uh, finance committee meeting for the foundation, but, uh, things are looking real good, I think, and I'm really comfortable with the asset allocations that are being made. By, uh, Hills Bank in this case, um, with the invested money, and, um, I think it fits our risk profile wonderfully, actually, so I think they're doing a good job. So I, I really don't have anything beyond that. I know that they met at Hills Bank though, right? And, uh, discussed, you know, Hills did a presentation on the investment portfolio, so, um, I don't have anything beyond that. Great insight, but really are, they really are doing a good, a great job, I think. I mean, I don't say that about every investment. Uh, finance, uh, or financial manager out there, financial. On the corporate side, um, in terms of, uh, you know, those folks, but, uh. This is, this is good, so, and, you know, we're making, we're making money in foundation, I think, um, as far as our investments go, so, um. It's a good job.
All right, and we do have a few news articles, uh, with, uh, library in the news, some better, some worse. Any questions about that?
I just wanted to add Iowa Standard got retweeted by some Moms of Liberty out there, so, um. It's a very small following, but it got picked up briefly in Colorado. It was like a two-hour flurry on Instagram and then. Nobody cares anymore, so, I mean, and then it just died off, but I followed that a little bit through the school district, which is watching it. Still, um, as they do.
So with all these emails I'm seeing, personally, or about business emails, I guess, within the organization, is that what was the, the blurb we put in your report? Was that person that wanted, or the organization that wanted to be the open meetings?
Yes, we have an open record request.
So that's how they got access to that, is what I'm asking, okay?
And the way that we, that process is done mostly is, in this case, the request was sent to me, I forwarded it to the city attorney, and then, um. Brett handles the backend of the search for the communication, so it's, um, it's a fairly prescribed process, so. We don't get many of them in the library, so it's, uh, it's a chance to stretch those muscles that we had for a while.
This was several articles, so was this some kind of expose? I mean, there's a lot of articles here.
It's kind of a personal agenda, I believe, about some investigating on the Iowa Standard, and it seems a little bit of a personal agenda. Um, it's a very anti LGBTQ. Paper, and it's small, I mean, it's at a Sioux Center.
You said.
Yeah, and it's, uh, kind of, it seems like primarily one guy.
Okay.
It, it seems like it's kind of one journalist.
It's a blog, but.
It's, it's kind of an extended blog, it's very, very anti LGBTQ, is really. What I looked into and what I saw from the articles and doing some, you know, follow the. Follow the links, and I believe he started in Fairfield and is currently in Sioux Center. Uh, and that's loose connection, but it was kind of. Not a hundred percent sure, but it sort of seemed to kind of flurry during last year's legislative session. And that is kind of continuing on with a kind of narrow scope of articles.
Yeah, it's a complex issue because, um. You know, things can be framed any way you want them to be framed, and in this case, um. Creating access to material is central to the public library's mission, so it's, um. I've been saying that we, we work to create access for every library, and what that kind of brought back in the negative, um. Feels complex, and I'm really, and. Um, the writer from the Iowa Standard did reach out to me, requesting some clarification on one of the emails. I responded to him, but I don't think that he understood, uh, the words, uh, which is fine, um. But it, it was a long loop up, a week and a half or two weeks of sort of art articles every day, um, before the. The open record request was sent back to them, um, and then they, they put out the long form.
I appreciate, sure, all those dudes that had some on that, yeah. And was glad, I assume we got all the same message from one person who was singing the praises of. Libraries and this library, so, yeah, there's only a few back that I heard.
I received one separate email from, um, someone who has communicated with the library before. Um, using some direct or anything related to it, saying that they, um. They thought that we weren't reacting in a problematic way, but they did not ask any questions or seek any information, just to respond.
What, what is the plan, if any, um, between the district and the library in terms of. Either ignoring this conversation or continuing the conversation, what? What kind of conver- what, what has happened in terms, in, in response to this with the two entities?
I think the plan is to continue to do what we do, so continue our, our individual scope of service, um. I fully intend to continue to inform with the full district's library staff about things that might happen with legislation. Try to keep abreast of what materials might be restricted, um, so that we can do our best to anticipate and respond appropriately to community need dangers, um. To be really explicit about it, we do not have a practice of immediately ordering materials that would be removed from a full collection or things like that. We always apply our collection development policy, um, AM's department is very involved, Andrew's department is involved with the local materials, um. But typically, we do see an increased interest in materials that are banned in our libraries, so when. I think if the district were to release a list or if there were other, other things like that, I mean, our expectation moves to. Books increase or requested increase for those titles, um, and I think that, that, um. To some people feels like an intentional, um, disregard for law, the law doesn't apply to us right now, but it feels a little bit like, um. More reactionary than it is, when you, but this thing applies to any, any part of the collection. If a local poetry collection was closing access to a community, we'd have the same conversations we went down to figure out what can we expect the community to need, how do we fill that gap, um. And I don't know if the district has any different.
The district so far, I mean. Limited information, I'm not a spokesperson. They have a PR team, they have a legal team. The legal team has combed through this extensively, and there's some misinformation in the articles, which is not a shock necessarily. There's some misinformation about what is technically legal to have in an elementary school library, um, because it's a difference between owning it and promoting it. And that's what the Iowa City School District has, that's what the legal team has decided to focus on, it's. Promotion is the law, ownership is not, so, um, there is some fine line there, um. They are, they watch it, you know, but it's really, um, our policies haven't changed, like our collection development policies as a district have not changed. Um, of course, we have, we did books because it's. And the list, I think, was published in the to mind register. I don't think it was complete at the time it was published, but that was also an open records request, so. It wasn't like we actively, like some communities are actively publishing their lists, um, Iowa City is not, um. But it's also available, I mean, it's, it's around, um, I can't really, I don't know what I can actually say. Because, I mean, I have limited information and it's been watched really closely, so, um. But because our policy is like, our day-to-day hasn't changed other than that we've had to remove books that are specific, and they were very careful and analytical. About what exactly had to be removed, which is nice here. Other places have been kind of broad scope. Um, Iowa City has been very systematic about what they've looked at and, um. Specific and documented every single instance, so everything has been documented, um, and vetted. So I think there's a hundred and seventy titles that were removed-ish. Um, but all of those were carefully reviewed. PDF photo, you know, like, I mean, there's systematic documentation for it, so.
Well, the district has a long history of.
Yeah.
Handling challenges.
Yeah, and I believe none of them have been removed, like, they've been removed from shelves, but none of them have been, they're just in boxes too. You know, in hopes that.
Yeah.
Climate shifts, I mean, unless it already, like, I removed some from my personal library that would already. Fall under my collection development policy as just not quality material, but they just weren't on my radar at the time until it came up on a list, so, um. But it was just also not quality material and it wasn't in use, so it fit under other qual- qualifications under standard collection development policy that I just would have eventually gotten rid of it, because nobody used it and it wasn't great. So there is, that's kind of the general, nothing's been removed unless it was already going to be at some point.
I think it's fair to say we can expect more, uh, scrutiny as this next legislative session gets underway and things move forward, so. This probably won't be the last open records request.
Yeah.
I think it, um, so much of our material is already publicly available, but sometimes we can respond to open record requests just with already available material, but I think you're right. And similar to what Claire was saying about the district, um, we, when this request came through, um, and. Um, we kind of got a sense of material they were looking for, I met with the city manager's office and the city legal, um, I went to comment, um. To just sort of talk through what kind of materials we were going to come up in it and answer any questions that people had. City legal, um, was very competent in our practices, follow all applicable laws, um, including the materials on the Bookmobile, the use of the Bookmobile, all of our card types, et cetera. And I always really value, um, the resource that is the city legal team, but in terms like this, it feels especially, um, significant. To have a team that, um, so we have a liaison to the library from my group, and she looks at our, she's very well-versed in, in library happenings, and it's such an asset. Um, to, to not have to start from the beginning and explain everything, to be able to watch that conversation and say, so here what's happening now, um, here are the questions that we have, we want to answer the questions that you have, but.
How many other, like, libraries around the state do this? Do kind of what we're doing? Have a Bookmobile? And have a Bookmobile with books?
I would assume that this is.
We outliers or?
But I think, I would, answering my other, I would say, as far as I know, everybody in the state Bookmobile. Has their regular collection development policy that includes the Bookmobile, so I don't know the details of how they would pick what materials are duplicated. Uh, we, and we, I'm sure we mostly do popular materials, high interest, my hold, um. And things that, hopefully our staffs identify as of particular interest to the places served, um. So I, I guess my answer would be, I think all of them would have some material with, um, LGBT, human development, um. Our voices kind of materials, but I, I don't know that in effect, which is kind of something.
In their Bookmobile, mostly it's just kind of like an afternoon, like, it is a child-focused Bookmobile, so I imagine that there's mostly children's materials on it. Analog in town, the real life donations, um. As Spat County, their Bookmobile, I think even more popular materials, um, as well as the Davenport, theirs is more technology-focused. Bookmobile, I'm not sure of their collection on there.
And these articles are very intentionally selected.
Oh, I, I understand that, yeah.
So for every one of these titles, we have lots of types of children's materials, um.
And, and they're focused too about the Bookmobile going to schools. What, and we pointed out, we're there in the afternoon when the kids are not in school, it's after school times that we're there, um, and. Very rarely do kids come on the Bookmobile without, um, a, a caregiver.
Yeah, I mean, that's not even, my, my big concern, I guess, is, I'm just for curiosity, is how pervasive is it throughout the state? Because, you know, I mean, on one hand, if you're a legislator sitting in Des Moines, and, you know, you read an article like this and, and. I'm very familiar with conservative publications, I've never heard of this org, you know, I don't know who these people are, quite honestly, but, um. You know, and I don't even think they're very well-written, frankly, but, um, you know. That said, though. You know, if you're a legislator in Des Moines, you know. And you're looking at, this issue pops up on some website you, you looked at. And you're saying, well, this is Iowa City, right? And if you're a conservative politician, you're like, well, Iowa City, you know. Um. And then they let it go, but if you start seeing this, like, pervasively, then all of a sudden, you know, it's like. It's, it's kind of like, how close to the bear can we get poking, you know? And that's my concern is that. What could legislators do? Of January? That might affect public libraries because they're ticked off, you know? It's all conjecture, you know, but.
I think that's why we meet regularly with legislators. But get, these are the lobbyists, and to them, it's not affecting.
Right.
It's greatest, yeah, with what's on the Bookmobile too, and the board, the members that go on. You know, we have, it's again, open to the public, they can walk on and see, um, but again, I, you know, it is. Every, and, and most of it is all new books on there, so.
Right, I mean, I can't believe, personally, I can't believe that, you know, and looking at some of these titles, that there are just swarms of people. Coming into the public library to check these books out, you know? So, there's that, although there might be. So there's that, although there might be when you.
Right.
Two articles, you know, and, you know, that, it always happens, right? But, uh, anyway, I just, uh, those are my concerns really, or just comments, um, I don't really have any. You know, I certainly think these articles were a little bit. I, I don't know if I was shocked as much as just, you know, I'm glad you put them in, actually, whoever puts these four things together, because, uh, you know, it's good to see kind of what's out there that might be a little different, a little different opinion. We like intellectual freedom, right? Um, see maybe a different opinion on these, but, uh, anyway. It's a shame that some of you, um, sitting at this table were singled out. That's what I didn't like particularly, but, uh, and then they have all our emails, so I guess everybody can email us if they have issues.
So it would be very interesting to see legislation that's specifically sponsored by the bookmobiles. As far as I know, that doesn't exist.
I don't, I don't know if it would, um, Ellsworth, if it would, if it would really, if, you know, if it would be legislation specific to bookmobiles as much as legislation, like, it starts going after libraries and saying, these are the titles you can't have.
That's extending the same policy.
Right.
To the public where it had already said.
Yeah, like, is, is the school's just a stepping stone to something.
Right.
Um, and they are seeing that in Idaho or.
Are they?
Yeah, and Carolina too, I believe, but, um, the other thing that's interesting about the legislation is that it affects different people in the same building, cause this legislation affects sixth graders but not seventh graders. In our school district, and now we have moved, we are the last, because of the age gap, because the age of the, that they put on the legislation, I mean, it's one collection in the same building for two different populations, so it's just kind of interesting that way, that it's affecting. There's some unintentional facts, I think, especially now that we've moved the sixth graders into the middle schools, and we are one of the last districts to do that in the state, like Iowa City is way behind um, other districts in the state that are doing that, so, um, this is kind of interesting. But you're right, I do see how articles like this could encourage people to feel the need to extend their reach.
It just depends.
To public information.
Absolutely, I think that just depends on how many in the, you know, the movement, um, pick up that article.
It looks like there's also a misunderstanding of sort of the structure and governance of public libraries as a whole. I think there's a lot of assumptions being made, the library which is sort of Wild West, and that maybe it's just a few of us randomly selecting items to provoke others. And when you look at the intentionality, um, the policy base that we use, and the board structure, and the way all of these pieces fit together, it makes so much sense, and I think that one of my biggest fears of looking at this kind of opposition is if legislation does come back around library governance, moving local control and moving invested community leadership, um, feels really damning to the, the role of the public library, to the mission of the public library, and it, um, this kind of coverage feels so dismissive of that, of the, the efforts and the work over in the last hundred and fifty years to get to where we are, um, but, but it's, um, it, it feels frustrating to, to just sort of see this kind of, um, manipulation of information, and, and that's, it's a complex intersection and it's hard.
In fact, uh, we can move on to the content agenda in a few minutes. For. Please, please.
Um, make an action simple.
Okay. We have a second.
All right, can I ask for some clarification?
Go for it.
Are we just doing the minutes of the whole consent agenda? What is the motion for?
Uh, the motion is, uh, approving minutes for the August twenty second.
Okay.
That's all. Who's in favor? I. He's opposed. Hearing no passes. All right, then we get into disbursements, and I forget the best way to cover this.
No, for a good, but it's fresh one.
We entertain a second.
Second.
Who's in favor? Look, one last thing to go over is the October agenda. We're gonna have, we're having a budget discussion. Going over our first, uh, quarter financial stats, two policy reviews, or five or two other one. All right, with that, not exactly in Rockland time, but.
More in conversation, though, yes.
We are adjourned?
Thank you.